All right, thank you everybody and welcome back. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting for March for the Interstate 35 School Board of Directors. With that, we'll start with a quick call to order. Nathan Gibson here.
Melissa Keller here. Jessica Buckland here. Monica Strange here.
All right, thank you. And there is nothing wrong with saying the Pledge of Allegiance twice in one night, so join me again, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And in case you missed it the first time, we'll go ahead and review the I-35 Mission Statement, district priorities, and board goals. The mission statement is the Interstate 35 Community School District. Is this the, excuse me, exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. Our 2024-2025 board goals are to continue to strengthen the culture of learning at the Interstate 35 Community School District that lends to engaged learning and rigorous growth. And by the end of 2024-2025 school year, the school will ensure transparency and will achieve optimal resource management by aligning staffing levels with student enrollment, maintaining a balanced budget, and ensuring full compliance with Iowa taxation laws. With that, is there any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I will motion to approve the agenda.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have open forum. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. And I do not have any. Okay, we have no speakers. The student representative report, I know Ross wasn't here with us tonight, but Mr. Brandon has his report and he's going to read it for us.
All right, Ross says teachers and students are trying to get back into swing of things after spring break. NHS is hosting a scrapbooking day this Saturday, the 29th. It goes from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. The event is to raise money to benefit the school and the community. ISAS tests are coming up next week, April 1st through the 3rd. The band is having a pancake supper coming up this Thursday to raise money to purchase new equipment. Prom and after prom is coming up on the 26th of April. Spring sports are starting. Baseball and softball pitching and catching have started as well to get ready for their seasons, and track meets are going to be coming in the next couple of weeks.
That scrapbooking event, 8:00 a.m. to midnight or 8:00 a.m. to noon?
Ross says 8:00 a.m. to midnight. I don't know. That's, I'm getting head nods.
Wow, okay.
It's past my bedtime, I don't know.
It's a lot of scrapbooking.
Serious.
All right. Any other, Siri had something to say. Any other discussion for that? Okay. Next, we have Roadrunner Celebrate Success. We don't have any on the agenda for that. Next is the administrative report. We'll start with Ms. Woods. You all should have had an opportunity to look at that. Are there any questions? I had a quick question. I was looking at the, first off, congratulations on the finishing, you and I literacy, and I love all the pictures of the event that you guys had for your end-of-year fair. As I was looking through it, I didn't really understand the color coding for your literacy goal continued. Does red mean like an area you focus, or did red mean an area you didn't quite hit what you wanted to achieve? I wasn't quite sure on that, on those blocks.
Right. So, the color coding system on here is Mrs. Woods's belief system. So, basically, and sometimes I can get a little inconsistent, but usually 60, or 59 and below is red, you know, super not good. Between that and 80 is typically yellow, and then, once we hit that 80 mark, green. But 79 was the highest we've ever been, so I felt like it needed to be green, I guess. So, yeah.
Thank you, that's helpful. I just didn't know if that was like the specific areas you were going to focus on, like your goals were really centered around that, or if it was you had a goal and just came a little bit short, but you're going to continue to pluck away at it.
I'd say all that data adds up into the goal, and so, to me, it just is highlighting where we need to target, celebrations within that, and specific, you know, if we have a grade not doing well, what are they missing? I think one thing you could look at is the transition in first grade. Up till middle of last year, we didn't have applied phonics readers. We've purchased geodes through our early literacy funds and through other funds, and now we have three sets, one for each classroom, and you can, you can see things like that. You can see what that's doing when it comes to the other side, in addition to the awesome teachers, so, yeah.
Thank you for explaining that. And again, congratulations and that career fair. When did that happen?
Which part?
The, I'm sorry, the Passion Project.
Oh, that was our last PD day.
Oh, okay.
So, we did one last year around this time, and they glared at me the whole time. I get them, I bought them the cheapest science boards I could find, and they glared at me the whole time, up to this year too, but it is the best day. Isn't it the best day? It's the good day. It's a good day.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
What were some of the projects that the teachers had?
Teachers, they each, so, the state requires you to have this professional learning goal as an individual, and so, we kind of fold all of that work together, because sometimes if you don't do anything with that, it can be a hoop to jump through type of a thing. And so, when they set their goal at the beginning of the year, they know it's part of this, and we're actually going to do it and live it. So, they pick their own passion, and it can be anything, you know, anything of interest. So, I just remember, man, put me on the spot. I remember like Libby Hayners, she had, she's focusing on some talking devices or communication devices, and how to help students that aren't able to verbalize, like, take those tools and utilize them in a way that they can be successful in the classroom or in meeting their basic needs. I don't know what else was cool there. I can't think of right now, I'm trying to think. It's just, everybody has their own priorities, and this allows them to highlight that and then learn from each other. And so, when you see somebody talking about something, it gives you the, oh, like, I never thought about it like that, or, oh, I want to try that. What did you, you know, how did you go about that? So, the learning from each other is mostly the biggest kind of takeaway from that. Yep.
I don't know if you can answer this, but the high school teachers, do they do a similar kind of passion project, wildly important goals?
I don't know that they use, yeah, I don't know that they use the word passion.
Yeah.
It might be frowned upon, but, yeah, they, just every school, every teacher's required to create a plan and work towards that plan, and Mr. Beckel has a system set up. He probably, you know, it's kind of elementary-ish. It reminds me of that picture where you see in the car, the elementary teacher's got like the boa on and all, you know, fluffy. So, I don't know that they do the boards, but they certainly have goals and processes and work through that with Mr. Beckel, so. Yep. Yep.
All right. And then, next up, we had Mr. Beckel's report. I don't see him here. I just wanted to make a comment that the Health Awareness Day, that looked pretty fun. I liked the lineup that they had. It wasn't just, you know, just the vaping or just, you know, self-care and stress, but also self-defense and yoga. I don't know if we took any recordings or clips of that. That'd be cool to like, you ever seen those videos, you know, you can, real short clips you can show on Facebook or whatever to show, you know, the different speakers or lineups just to show the community of the stuff that the kids get to engage on? Just a thought I had on that. So, looked like it was a fun day, and thanks to Ms. Steinloggi and Ms. Dickinson for putting that on, too.
I was curious, who were the motivational speakers? Do we know?
Randy Bolton.
Who?
Randy Bolton.
Randy Bolton.
I don't.
He used to work at Clark. He was the elementary assistant principal, then he was the A.D. for a while, now he does motivational. He does a lot with the endurance program and stuff when they do in the mornings and...
Okay. All right.
He's very motivational, he's a nice guy. I will say, I wanted to comment on that, too. That's genius, because that week before spring break is a nightmare, enough so that I may steal the suggestion and take it, because it gives the kid something to do on those crazy scheduled days when they're getting out early. And it stuck with them, because as soon as Mia came home, she wanted to practice her self-defense moves that she learned that day, so that was fun.
And then, obviously, ISAP testing this week, so that's a big thing. Starts tomorrow and goes through Friday, correct? Yep.
I think next, is it this week or next?
Yeah.
It's next week.
Oh, it's next week?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Thank you for correcting me on that. All right. Any other comments? Okay. And then, we had Deputy Hollerood's report this time. Do we get those quarterly? Is that what we're planning on those? Okay. Any comments or anything, feedback on that? Thank you for the detailed readout. Sometimes I have to remember that this isn't just, you know, school stuff, it's you as a deputy and everything that you're doing, and I appreciate you share that, but sometimes I lose that and I look and I'm like, why is that happening at the school? But it's not, so.
I agree.
Yep. So, any comments or questions for Deputy Hollerood? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we have the superintendent report. And I think we're starting with a facilities update.
Yeah, I don't see Garrett, so I will take the facilities report. So, over spring break, we were able to get substantial completion for the baseball fields and the batting cages. We just so happened to get it on Wednesday when it rained and was miserable all day. So, I don't believe the teams had any chance to go in the cages or anything, but they do have access to the fields and the cages now, which is awesome. We're still, they're still working through a few items in the concession stand. Bathrooms, all the fixtures and everything is, are installed. Concessions stand spaced, there's still a few items that they're waiting on and trying to get, trying to get finished up that way. Fiber was, I think, possibly finished up this week, and they were trying to finish the connections to get connections out there this week. So, just a few items left out there, and then that'll be ready to go for our first competitions coming up, so.
Well, I have to be honest, Cora and I snuck over there on Thursday, and she did a little practice run, and she was just in awe. She came around the corner, she said, what's those red? What is all that red? And I said, that's the concession stand. What? So, it's beautiful. I mean, if you haven't gone out there, like, oh, my goodness, it's beautiful. So, it's definitely coming together, so excited to, excited to watch everybody play, and beautiful. So, thank you.
The, also, over spring break, the electrical for our air conditioning units in the secondary wing was all tidied and finished up, so when units come in and school gets out in May, they'll be ready to put those in and get that finished up so that their air conditioning is ready to go for next school year, so.
And this, that would cover the hallway?
Backside hallway.
Yeah, but the library hallway that's going all the way down, so.
Finishing out the tee that gets to that.
Okay, all right. And that's the last thing as far as classrooms? Okay. Awesome. That's great news. So, the fiber, I have to ask this. We did get that marked on our design so it doesn't get cut in the future? Okay. And then, I noticed, I went out there as well, I didn't get help, but I drove through just to look at it. Are they going to plant grass seeds there by the concession stand that look like dirt right now? Are they going to put sod down, or?
So, there's, there's actually grass seed there, and it's supposed to germinate and be beautiful by the time we have our first games, but we will, we will work and make sure that we have some grass there, or try our best, so.
Yep. I might caution tape that off so it doesn't get trampled on. It'll germinate, but it'll be young, I guess, and so, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a quick question on facilities. We had been talking to Madison County Extension Office, I think, about some grass, prairie. Is that still in the works?
Yeah, actually, Danielle, you were kind of taking the lead on that, the prairie outside the library. Do you know where?
Sorry, I missed the question.
I just wondered what the status was.
As far as I know, they had burned and seeded, so, in progress. Yep.
Any other questions on superintendent report? Okay. Move on to discuss and approve the consent items. You guys should have got a copy of the past meeting minutes for the February board meeting. We had our monthly bills and financial statements, which I don't know, so we didn't have any change from the last thing. What was online was, normally you have a printout for us of things that changed since the...
We stopped doing that.
Oh, okay. So, what we have on there is accurate? Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay. So, you all should have got a copy of the monthly bills and financial statements, and then resignation, contract hires, which I will read through here real quick. Go ahead.
Okay, so we don't, we don't get a detailed list of what bills were going out?
It's on there.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's in there. It's just before you would get a deadline list and added, but we've started just making the deadline, the deadline.
And then go back to the, click on that.
Oh, it's that? Because, yeah, can you show me what you're looking at? Maybe I don't.
I saw it two days ago.
The details of the bills, that's, yeah.
Yes, they were in there, yeah.
Okay.
I was able to look at them two days ago, so if there's nothing that changed.
I'll make sure that these get added in on there, and they will get to the newspaper, sorry.
It's hard to review those this quick, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let you take a look as I read through this, so. For hires, we had Victoria White, preschool teacher for the 2025-2026 school year. Resignation, Michelle Higgers resigns as full-time, long-term substitute teacher. Anna Valdez resigns as assistant robotics coach. Lucinda Murphy resigns as custodian, and Ashley Vanderfoot resigns as associate. We had the open enrollment, which you guys should see in your board packet agenda as well. Then we had approval of the OPN pay apps for the labs and fields. Facilities master planning was 3,241.35, and the labs field project was 6,979.42. And then, approval of the January pay app for field projects was 83,716.51.
That should be February payout, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, February pay app. And then we had approval of the DCI invoice number 13, $19,104.46. What was that one for? Oh, the science lab renovation for DCI. Is this a DCI-specific bill just for their services? Okay. Is there any discussion on the consent items? I feel bad, because I know you're just now getting a chance to look at that, so.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. I'm going to give Monica just a minute to look at that.
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
It's been properly motioned to approve the consent items, so I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the action agenda. The first thing's up is the approval of the FY26 Educational Support Employee Increase. Did you want to talk to this at all, or is it overview?
You can see it in your packet there, but it would add 75 cents per hour to all the currently employed covered by the association, which is approximately $55,500 increase and about a 3.86 percentage-wise, and then adding 37 cents to the starting hourly wage for the following positions.
I feel pretty good this matches up. I know we had a discussion about the associates at a previous board meeting, and it puts us in the direction of starting to be competitive in that space.
We're definitely hoping that, and then we can hopefully be able to focus more on that support staff, once the teachers have kind of leveled out on their legal, how we've got to change their pay.
You still have to catch up from the requirements from legislature, right? So, we have to level that out. Once we get that leveled out, then we can hopefully make some more gains with that, too, so.
Is there any more discussion on that item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 education support employee increase.
It's been properly motioned to approve the FY26 Education Support Increase. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We're properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the employee benefit proposals. The insurance committee met on three different occasions, once in January, February, and March, to review the changes to the employee benefits, and we have an attachment that decisions made in collaboration with Gallagher, the insurance committee, and the district office staff. Is there any discussion or questions on the employee benefit proposal?
I just want to thank April for running through the different scenarios. I think it was really helpful for the insurance committee just to play around with the numbers, per se, and the what-if scenarios. We knew there was going to be an increase, but I think having Gallagher at that, that meeting was very, very helpful to walk through just why we're changing and looking at some different carriers, what's a benefit overall. So, I just, three meetings, it's, you know, it may seem like a lot, but I think that there was, I feel like there was a good consensus and an understanding in the end, and so, I think that was really helpful for everyone. So, thank you for all of your work on that, and everyone that was able to attend as well.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the employee benefit proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee benefit proposal.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, we have the E-Rate, CAT 1 and CAT 2 for the 2025 E-Rate. 60% of the purchase price is given back to the district for these items. It's a little bit hard to read on this screen. Sorry, give me just a second. All right, so, I-35 opened the FCC 470 E-Rate bidding for the following equipment and equipment-related support. Category 1, internet service, and then for category 2, are these switches? Okay, so, network equipment. I'm not going to read through all those, so, yeah. I thought I was recognizing what it was, but my brain wasn't computing. So, basically, this is internet service and networking equipment. So, approval of the CAT 1, the recommendation from the administration to prove with CAT 1 Omni-Tel Communication for $200 per month, and CAT 2 for AirCore for $42,591.78. Is it, and we get 60% back of that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, first off, is there discussion? So, are we buying this equipment, running this, the switches in particular?
Purchasing.
Oh, purchasing them? Okay, and then we get 60% back after we purchase it?
Yeah.
That seems like a pretty good deal? Okay.
And there's different categories that come up in each different timeframes, and that's where we're working with the AEA now.
Sorry. But there's different categories that then get focused on each period, different timeframes, so these were the two that we're up right now that we got bids on, and it's a competitive bidding process.
And this is recycling existing equipment that we have, or adding to? Yes, okay. All right. Thank you for getting the multiple bids, by the way. Well, requesting it anyways.
Part of the E-Rate process is they do that for us, right?
Okay.
Which is really, really awesome.
Yep.
It's a good service to have.
Yep. Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions on that? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the E-Rate CAT 1 and CAT 2 service with the administration's recommendation of approving CAT 1 Omni-Tel Communications for $200 per month, and CAT 2 AirCore for $42,591.78. That's the administration's recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation to approve CAT 1 with Omni-Tel and CAT 2 with AirCore.
It's been properly motioned to approve Omni-Tel Communications and AirCore. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the Iowa LGRP Participation Agreement. The local government risk pool was organized under the Iowa Code, Chapter 28E, in effort to provide stability to school district budgets by pooling risks. The program continues as intended to provide budget certainty and flexibility for Iowa schools. Looks like the history of this, we're saying in here how much we've saved. Is that what that is?
That's the cost each year.
Oh, cost each year, okay. So, it's going up by 100 bucks this year, about the same. And what exactly is the risk pool? Like...
It's kind of like an insurance on your gas usage, on your natural gas.
I knew it was natural gas, that's what I thought.
And using this program makes it so that instead of paying out of the general fund for our gas bills, which are around this amount every year, then we get a used management fund. So, it's just paying it out of a different fund, protecting the general fund to be used more for the school specific.
And it protects us from hikes in the natural gas prices?
Correct.
All right. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the FY 2026 Participation Agreement.
It's been properly motioned to approve the FY 2026 Participation Agreement for $90,824.58. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval agreement for Morningside College. Approved agreement with Morningside College to allow practicum, field experience, student teaching, or internship experiences at I-35 Community School District. Is there discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the agreement with Morningside College for the student teaching, internship, field experience, and practicum at I-35.
It's been properly motioned to approve the agreement with Morningside College. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the 25-26 AEA purchasing. Next, we have the approval of the 25-26 AEA purchasing agreement. The area education for food bid, small, small wares bid, and ware, ware-wash bid for 2025-2026 school year. Am I saying that right? Okay.
It's like your silverware.
Oh, silverware. Oh.
Like, yeah.
So confused. Is there discussion on the AEA purchasing agreement for silverware and food?
More than that.
Yes, yes. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the AEA purchasing agreement.
It's been properly moved. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have approval of the football uniforms purchased. Football uniforms that the boosters have committed covering $7,500. The district will be responsible for $2,627 after the donation is applied. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of football uniforms from Danco for $10,127. Is there discussion?
In the, it's more of a comment. In the past, we've been able to see what the uniforms were gonna look like prior to approving. Not that I, not that I want to approve the uniform, but it's just nice to see what they might look like, a sample. I don't know if that's possible to ever see like a picture of just what they're gonna look like.
These are just an updated, these are our reds. So they, we tried to make each set last six years. So these would've been bought back in the day with AD the last time, so before Keegan. And red is the one we have to buy the top and bottom at the same time, where the reds are not guaranteed to match. And so this is a higher build than normal, but that's because we have to buy both at the same time. So we rotated through the last six years. I think we had a generic random look like, but they look exactly like ours now.
Got it. Thank you.
And it's all between the boosters, the activities department, and it's funding.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion or questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the purchase of football uniforms from Danco.
It's been properly moved to purchase of football uniforms from Danco. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the Timberline for Medical Services building, the medical billing services. The recommendation is to approve Timberline Agreement for Medical Billing Services. And this, is there a cost on this one?
It's, I didn't look at it exactly. It's usually between a 2% and 3% of what we bill to Medicaid and what our reimbursement is. So it's based completely off what our billing is.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Is there other companies that offer this?
Yep, there's other companies. I actually just sent Stephanie Wong to have her review for, to check with the AEA to make sure it's compatible. We do a lot of that behind the scenes, looking at their rates and to see if it's something we'd want to do for maybe FY27 as switch. But for this year, we, when I say we, we kind of decided that we're good to keep it where we're at. And then we can start looking at other companies that work close, that work well with the AEA also.
Thank you.
I think I just found on the fee that says, "District shall pay Timberline a fee equal to 6% of the net Medicaid reimbursement retained by the district," so.
And the net is because we pay the state of Iowa a portion of what we get also. They pay us, and then we have to return, pay it back.
Gotcha.
So it equals out to be between 2% to 3% of the gross, and then the net is.
Gotcha.
The net amount.
Thank you. For further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Timberline for Medicaid Billing Service Agreement.
It's been properly motioned to approve the Timberline Agreement. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And next up, we have the FY24 school audit. So for this fiscal year, school audit report is provided by TrustPoint Certified Public Accountants. And it's a very large book here that I think they're gonna walk us through. This wasn't a part of the board materials, was it?
Yeah, it was on, it's on the.
Okay, okay. Oh, this is the same thing that was attached?
Yes. It's just electronic. They mailed us copies.
Okay. All right. April, did you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yep. For the most part, most of the pages just go through. It's a kind of a template that just gets filled in of everything that's gotta be reviewed and looked at. Page 67 is the one where there's findings. That's where I always flip to, and that's what we look at. You'll see that segregation of duties is listed. It's something that we'll continue to look at. It's a comment that's on almost every single school, especially your smaller schools. But we will continue to reevaluate, look at it, see what the software systems that we have, what they've got capabilities to do to keep that segregation of duties as much as we can in a district this size. And then, for some reason, I can't see. Was there anything else from page 67 to 69 that? I know that we had overspent the budget in one of the four categories, and that was because of construction, more construction project bills came through for fiscal year '24 than what was accounted for when, when the budget was created, and then there wasn't an amendment.
Is there any questions or discussion on the audit report? I think, I, I think for the, the segregation of duties, when I saw that on last year's report, I think it was on the year's report before, and the main reason for that is because we don't have the amount of staff to separate things out like that, so.
Right. For one person to only do receipts would be.
Yeah, we, we just, finally, we can't afford that, yeah.
Right.
And, and we don't have the volume, I think, to justify that as well. So when they see that, you know, and I don't know who, you know, who looks at that outside this, this board, somebody at the state, I'm sure, they recognize that, right? It's not like big red flags or anything. It's just kind of known, everybody gets it.
Yeah. Even at my prior district, which was larger, it was always the same. The key is just looking at it and every year talking through what the processes are to see if there's a way to make anything better so that there's more than one set of eyes on different components.
Was there anything in this that, you know, outside that? I know that's the only thing that you brought up that you're gonna continue to work on, but nothing else is of concern. I know you're new here, so this is, you know, your first time having somebody else really go through and see, you know, what you inherited and picked up. Anything concern you at all?
Not really. The audit process went pretty smooth. We're gonna try to come prior to the CAR getting filed this year, so we'll see. Hopefully, that'll, that was my only request with them, and it sounded like they'd be able to accommodate.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve and accept FY24 school audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 audit.
It's been properly moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The upcoming dates, our next board meeting is scheduled for April 28th, 2025. That's the only thing. We do have a facilities meeting this, this Thursday. That will take place in the library at 6 o'clock. Sorry, I want to make sure I get everything right. So, yeah, that was, that was one of the things. Do encourage members of the public to come out and, while your voice, voice be heard, is it just a presentation or the open forum? Opportunity for feedback. And members of the facilities committee will be there, as well as our architect, who's gonna be presenting, putting, playing together. So encourage members of the public to come out and have your voice be heard. And then based off what Ross says, as soon as you're done with that, head over to New Virginia for the band fundraiser to get some good food and support the band. So outside that, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.